All right. Good evening. This is the February 23rd, 2021, meeting of the Grotton Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeff Chairman, Jeff Pritchard is the Chair. Tonight's staffers Bruce Lofgren and me Deb Jones. There are two opportunities to address the commission tonight. One is during the public hearing for 55 Star Street subdivision. And the other is under Public Communications. If you do want to address the commission, you do need to raise your virtual hand on an Apple device. You can find that at the top of your screen on a PC at the bottom. If you're on the phone, it is star nine.
Okay. So I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is roll call. Looks like everybody is here except for Kevin. That's all. First business item is public hearings. We have a continuation of the public hearing for 55 Star Street subdivision. I'd like to limit the discussion and presentation to the question of open space, which we were not able to complete in our last section of the public hearing. So I'll turn it over first to the applicant for his presentation, then from town staff to see if they have anything to add it. Then it opened up to the public if they have any new items to address and then the commissioners for their questions. And then continue the the process of rotating around to get all the questions answered because tonight would be the night we have to close the public hearing. And we cannot accept any information after that. So I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
His presentation.
Can the commission hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Great. Thank you. For the record, again, tonight, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm an attorney and a partner at the law firm of Tobin Carberry in New London, Connecticut. Joining me tonight is the project engineer for the subdivision Greg Fettis. And also on the call is Graham Gallagher, who is the principal of the applicant 55 Star LLC. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to appear again before you tonight, and I will try to be very brief. I know we've spent a number of hours on this matter. And Mr. Chairman, as you recall, at the last meeting, we continued the hearing for the sole purpose to provide an open space dedication plan at the request of the commission. And tonight's continuation was for that item. As you know, we did apply originally for the fee in lieu of open space. We still believe that's appropriate in this situation. But in good faith, once again, we've developed an alternative plan for your consideration this evening. As you know, in an actual open space dedication, an applicant is required to provide 10% of their lot area for dedicated open space. We have a very small parcel to begin with, less than an acre. And so 10% of that for an open space parcel is just over 4,000 square feet. But we were able with some work over the last two weeks to adjust our plan to provide you a sample of what a plan with an open space dedication might look like. And so at this time, Greg, I see Greg's walking. But if Greg could display, it looks like he's frozen now. Greg, if you could display the original subdivision plan, just so we can get acquainted and then I'll put up the the modified alternative.
Bruce. Yeah, I have it available. I can.
Could you do it, Bruce? Bruce, if that's okay, I think Greg's having some connection problems. Yeah. Could you, could you show the original plan first? Just so. Yeah, thank, yeah, keep going down, a little bit further down. Yeah, exactly. So this is the original plan that we submitted to the commission. And just a couple of things I want to point out in this plan, it's three lots. Two, that would be sort of traditional frontage lots. That's lots one and three, and then lot two, which would be classified as a rear lot accessible through a dedicated 25 foot wide strip in the between lots one and three. And you can see the areas of these lots are fairly small. They're greater than the 12,000 square foot requirement for the district. But so what we did is we went back sort of to the drawing board and said, can we fit in a 10% of the spaces, open space parcel? So if you could show now Bruce what we submitted this week to you. Okay. So here's a, here is a sort of the alternative design that we provided. So in this situation, what we've done, there is a regulation on rear lots that allows you to access a rear lot through a dedicated easement over another property. You're limited to doing that just once for in a lot division. And so rather than having a dedicated strip at for access to lot two, what we're doing is an easement over lot one for lot two. It's not ideal. It's certainly not what we would want to do. But that allows us to take the land that was in that strip and move it effectively to the western side of the site to an open space parcel. This would be adjacent to Ms. Nelson's property. And we also took additional area from lots one, two, and three to get a open space parcel that's 4,169.5 square feet, which meets the 10% minimum requirement. Our intention, based on what we heard from the commission last time, this is improved yard right now, so it's not critical habitat or, you know, a wetland area or anything like that would be to put a bench along Star Street so that I guess effectively somebody could sit and look at Star Street or look at the fields across Star Street. So we wanted to show you that geometrically that it's possible to create an open space parcel if the commission deems it necessary. You know, the net effect of this is that it makes the other three building lots smaller. It constrains the remaining building envelopes, which makes it harder to build houses, probably resulting in smaller houses, particularly for lot two. And it's definitely not a desirable, you know, design for us and but it can be done. And so we wanted to show that that was the the task that was assigned to us. And as I said before, you know, the open space would be designated for, I guess, a passive public purpose. Some sort of pocket park, I think is probably the right word for that, for that space. That space does meet the minimum 50 foot of frontage requirement. It, the commission would have to approve its dimensions. The, the minimum dimension for open space, other than the frontage is 200 feet. But 50 times 200 is more than twice the area that we're allowed to require, but you're allowed to approve those dimensions. So you can see it's basically a triangular shape, a lot goes back 139 feet and then 142 feet back to a point in the sort of the southwest corner of the site. I do want to point out that in the record, and I'm sure that maybe Bruce might bring this up in his staff review. On February 17th, after we submitted this plan, there was a letter submitted into the record by Mark Berry, who is the Director of Parks and Recreation for the town. And in his February 17th letter, he actually had reviewed our plan and recommended that the commission adopt a fee in lieu of open space dedication so that this town can protect actual habitat in an underserved area of the community that doesn't have open space and green space opportunities like this one, rather than effectively 4,100 square feet of an existing residential lawn. You know, Mr. Berry goes on to note in his recommendation that his, his recommendation comes from the town's natural resource management plan. And it's open space review policy. And he notes that future town open space should target highly important habitat, important habitats and connectors between existing green space. This open space would do none of that, and there's nowhere, nowhere on the site to be able to meet those requirements. Further, you know, the open space that's actually dedicated and accepted in the town should protect significant natural resources, species and ecosystems that are rare or significant. Again, that's not the situation we have here. There's no, also, he points out that there's no need identified in the town for additional open space in this area. It's not part of the town's greenway. It's not a greenway identified in the plan of conservation and development. And it's not identified, this area is not identified in 2009 Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan for this area of town as well. And we would submit for the record that we agree with Mr. Berry. And with all due respect to the commission, we find the idea of establishing a pocket part at this location to be nonsensical and quite frankly absurd. This is not why you have open space dedication in your regulations. The purpose of of open spaces to protect these critical habitats, these unique features. And this is exactly, I would submit to you, the reason why you have the fee in lieu of provisions in your regulations. This is the exact situation where fee in lieu of makes sense. And you have the Director of Parks and Recreation tonight, you know, in his February 17th letter saying just that. I just would close with a couple of just final points. You know, we did reach out to our closest neighbor to the south to discuss possible resolution of their concerns. We were unable to negotiate anything with them. I do, I'm sure that Mr. Slater, who's I'm sure is going to be on tonight, will tell you that we received a copy of a lawsuit this afternoon at just before six o'clock that he intends to serve on my client. And that lawsuit, he has every right to file it. We will contest it vehemently, but it has nothing to do with the subdivision before you tonight. And I would submit that it can't be used in your, in consideration of anything in your role in reviewing this subdivision. And so tonight I would ask you, after reviewing this, to close the public hearing, honor the regulations that you have written, the regulations that we've adhered to through the process, reject the idea of a dedicated piece of open space, accept a fee in lieu of in the alternative, which you're allowed to do under your regulations, and approve the subdivision plan, which we originally submitted to the commission for approval. Tonight, I tried to restrain myself and stay limited to the issues of open space and the open space plan as directed by the chairman. I'd asked that the chairman make sure that the rest of the meeting is conducted in the same manner so that we can all get out of here at a reasonable hour. I think we've had plenty of time to discuss the other items related to this application, and I'm not going to repeat or rehash those items for you. So thank you for your time tonight. We're available if you have any questions or if you want to go over any of the open space details that we've provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to town staff. There any comments they have on, on the open.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Bruce Lofgren from the Office of Planning and Development Services. Just a few clarifications. Attorney Sweeney highlighted it very well, but I'll just keep my comments to the open space right now and let's there are questions about any other elements later on at the meeting. So section 4.9 of the subdivision regulations, state PGC shall require land be reserved for parks, playgrounds, open space for other public purposes. And this requirement can be satisfied by 10% of the land or a fee in lieu of payment equal to 10% of the value of the subdivided land in instances where the open space would not meet the purpose of that regulation. As you heard from the applicant again tonight, they prefer the fee in lieu. You, you also heard that the Director of Parks and Recreation, Mark Berry, submitted a letter saying that he preferred the fee in lieu option as well. And I believe that that will be read into the record in full later on in the meeting. Just something I wanted to point out. So the, the fee in lieu is 10% of the subdivided land value. That was done by an appraisal. It was reviewed by the town's tax assessor and she concurred that that was an accurate appraisal. It was found to be $21,500 that would be given to the town and put into our open space acquisition. Right now, we do have a grant application that's pending. We actually may receive word that we are granted it tomorrow. And in part of that, we, the town would have to provide a match. And this type of fee in lieu could be applied directly to a match to acquire, you know, larger developed open space parcels in the town that are, you know, more geared towards the OCD's recommendations of getting land within the town, greenways, connecting green belts, connecting trails and things like that, which, you know, this property doesn't do as well as some other parcels may. So I just wanted to put that out there that, you know, these funds do go towards open space acquisition. It doesn't just go into a black hole and it's something that we could maybe directly apply as early as next week. I just wanted to put that out there. And as for the access way there, Attorney Sweeney did mention that. So we do have a provision that all lots are required to have at least 25 feet of frontage, frontage with the exception of one rear access lot and be satisfied with an easement such as what you're seeing here on this, on this plan here. So I did review this and it does conform with, with the exception, and it does allow for an easement to be used in lieu of the frontage. And, and this design was designed to meet that. And yeah, that's all I have to add to this, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. And turn it over to the public for any communications there, if they want to address the commission. But first, I'd like to have the secretary read the letter from Mark Berry regarding the town's interest in open space. So Hal, could you read the letter for the record?
This is from the Town of Grotton Parks and Recreation Department. This is upon review of the proposal to designate a portion of the parcel on 55 Star Street as open space. The recommendation is that the town accept a fee in lieu of equal to 10% of the appraised value to be used to secure future open space parcel that would protect a space with more important habitat or improve the level of service in an underserved portion of the community. Recommendation is based on the following. Parks and Recreation Department Natural Resource Management Plan identifies actions for establishing an inventory of open space review policy. Future open space acquisitions should target areas identified by the nature's network, three tiers of highly important habitats, important habitats and land connectors. Determine the significance of the natural resources as identified by local, state and federal classifications and incorporate these assessments into park planning documents. Identify and protect species and ecosystems that are rare or significant on a local, regional or national scale. There is no significant natural resource habitat or species that would be protected or preserved within this preserved open space. The parcel is not within the proposed greenways identified in the plan of conservation development and does not further land connection to, to adjoining open space parcels. In 2009 Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan, the level of service for outdoor facilities in the area around Star Street was identified between adequate to excellent. That is signed respectfully, Mark Berry, Department Director of Parks and Recreation.
Okay, thank you, Hal. And I'd like to open it up to the public if they have any items they would like to address concerning the subdivision application. Do we have anybody with their hand raised, Deb?
Yes, we do. Let's see. Medeline Carney.
Hi, this is Stephen Carney and I'm sitting with seven residents of the neighborhood. And I do know that you wanted to keep the conversation limited to the question of open space. So I did submit a letter and I'm not convinced that the driveway issue is being appropriately considered in that that driveway is being double used and that it's already supporting two lots. But I put my reasons in writing already. And I would just ask before there's a vote, did that be carefully considered and discussed? And whether that is really going on in other parts of the town? In regard to the open space, what I really have a great concern about, just listening and everything that does happen from this perspective really quickly is when I hear the letter being written, which, excuse me, being read, this is the first time I'm hearing it being read. I really get worried that the person writing it doesn't understand that this property is special. And I think that the reason that the limited liability corporation wants the land is because it's special. I think the reason that seven people are sitting here is because the land is special. And I don't know if it's really fully appreciated like it was by the Gannons as to how special this piece of property is. And it won't be special if it's made for a subdivision that's overdeveloped and not in character with everything else in this neighborhood. This land is adjacent to the historic district. It does provide connections to important irreplaceable parts of town. And it's across from what I'm told is an unbuildable marsh. And it would provide walkers with a place to sit down and to enjoy the community that they've chosen to both live in and visit. And when Mr. Sweeney talks about other places, I'm sure he's not going in, say in Norwich where he worked for a long time to places where people do come from great distances to come and appreciate what's here. And so if there's a vote without an understanding as to how special this piece of property is and our location across from the seaport with really great views from the street, then I think it's not been adequately and appropriately considered. And for other reasons too, I would ask that this be denied. And I would say that it is perfectly appropriate at all times to use regulations for the benefit of people who actually live here and not for the benefit of corporations. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, Deb. We have anyone else that wishes to address this?
Yes, we do. We have Ken Slater.
Well, Deb, you might want to go back to Madeline because they said seven people there.
A good, good point. Um, is there anyone, anyone else under Madeline Carney who wishes to speak?
Uh, no, we're fine for right now. Thank you though.
Okay, great. All right, then Ken Slater.
Good evening. Could I be able to join like Attorney Sweeney did? And could I ask that either staff or the applicant's engineer pull up the?
All right, you should be able to turn your camera on.
Could you share with the, the screen with that page from the open space plan? And good evening. Just for the record, my name is Ken Slater. I'm attorney with, partner with Halloran and Sage. I represent Olga Labella, who is the immediate adjoining owner of the property as well as the person who, one of two persons, she and, and Mr. John Carney have access over the access way, which is shown on the eastern portion of the parcel of the LLC land. And as Attorney Sweeney had indicated, you don't have the ability to decide issues of title. And so you could not deny this application on the ground of trying to decide whether my client will prevail or not in the suit that, that the, she it's been, it's been issued. It's a question of whether Attorney Sweeney will accept service and he'll let me know tomorrow or whether we'll serve the agent for service. Either way, that will happen tomorrow or the next day. But what the lawsuit pertains that is something that you should consider is that the, it asserts that the land between the stone wall and the, the improved portion of the access way that that is, is owned by my client, Olga Labella, under doctrine of adverse possession. So if we prevail, and you should take no position as to whether we will or we won't. But if we do, then believe I, either the open space plan or the initial plan would not be in compliance with zoning, with your subdivision regulations and zoning regulations. So what I suggested last time, and it does relate loosely to the open space issue because this new plan provides access to that lot by way of crossing the land that my client asserts she owns exclusively. That persons, you'd want to make sure that persons buying this lot and the commission would have an opportunity. I'll just talk about from the commission standpoint. If we prevail, then what you have on the record is a subdivision plan that doesn't comply with zoning and that's, that's not appropriate. So there should be some indication if the commission were to disagree with our position on open space and were to approve it. Some kind of condition should be drafted by staff to just put the property owner on notice and any subsequent property owner on notice that if, that if in fact, the property that is shown between the stone wall and the wall is determined to be owned by my client, then the applicant would need to come back with a revised. It would not be a resubdivision, but they would need a revised subdivision plan to have lots that, that conform with zoning. So I had indicated the last session that, that we would proceed with that, that action and, and we have. With respect to the open space, there's some misconceptions that I would like to, to raise with the commission. And that is the 10% number. The 10% number is a fixed number if you were to determine that a deed in lieu of open space would be permitted. There's a finite number. For open space, your regulations, like I think all subdivision regulations I've seen involving open space set in floor, a minimum. And that minimum is not like lot size. Lot size, if you meet your minimum and there's, you're not dealing with a special permit or anything like that, as long as you meet the minimum, then the commission doesn't have the discretion to deny and wish it was a slightly larger lot. Open space is an entirely different thing. And one of the reasons you could accept open space is for any other public purpose. So you have reserved open space in any public purpose. So what I'm going to talk to you about is discretion and the kind of discretion that you have under the law. One is it's your decision, not the applicant's and not staff of the town as to what, how you think a property is appropriately developed under the subdivision regulation. That's a power that's vested in you under the regulations and only you. So what is appropriate open space? Obviously, you can take into account what you hear and what the position of the town might be. But ultimately, the buck stops with you in terms of what you think is reasonable. Now, back to the 10%, that is the floor, but you have the discretion. There's a case, it came out of Thompson. It was called 200, 200 Associates versus the Planning and Zoning Commission of Thompson. It was an appellate court case. And in that case, the minimum that would have been required for the subdivision was 6.2 acres of open space. And the applicant proposed double that, 13 plus four acres. And the commission was not satisfied that it was appropriately designed, that the open space, they, they had discretion both as to size, location and kind. And on appeal, the commission simply denied and determined that they were not satisfied with that open space design, that it, it should be designed that the area, in this case, you could determine that it was the wrong area and that it's not large enough. And you're not constrained because they're able to squeeze this to, you know, around 100 square foot to what's the minimum of the lot. You're not constrained to say, okay, we're not going to require any more open space than is necessary to make sure they get three lots out of this property. That's, that's our job is what we'll allow. No, it's not. You can look at any property and decide whether or not that your first, the, the first default is to have open space. The second is you could decide that you'll accept the, the fee in lieu of that. And I suggest that, and you look at a particular property's application, whether or not there's a good grant application that's, that might be sitting at town hall is really of no consequence in terms of deciding whether, when you look at a particular property, whether the particular open space is appropriate or not. So this case gives you the discretion to say that it is not. And again, this is showing it just so they can get something upfront. I don't live in, I've been, I've been in the neighborhood. It's a lovely neighborhood. I don't live there. You are more comfortable, you are more familiar with the property. The neighbors are more familiar with the property. I suggested this plan, you know, in addition to, you know, showing that they're going to additionally, additionally use the, the driveway that we have. You know, just in looking at it, I don't think it's adequate. And I think you should understand that your 10% is not, if you ring that bell, it's not like a lot size. It's not, you ring the bell and you're okay. It's what is reasonable to you as for a use in terms of the vistas, in terms of the topography, whether it would be better at the rear or the in terms of the vistas, in terms of the topography, whether it would be better at the rear or the front, whether it's large enough. You know, our, our position continues to be, in terms of the subdivision in general, that, you know, that it's a, you know, I said, you know, 10, 10 pounds in a five pound bag, that this really is not appropriate for this, for this particular location. And where you have the discretion to, to, to decide is when you evaluate the open space issue. So I just wanted to, to point out, you know, I agree with Attorney Sweeney wholeheartedly, but you should know about that, the issue that we have, have claimed entitled to the property. And that will affect the, whether or not these lots comply. So again, we would ask that that be accommodated if there was an approval. But we urge that it be denied and that the commission can simply determine that this open space plan is, is not sufficient under the regulations requiring open space and simply deny the application. And we ask that you do that. And we thank you. I thank you for your consideration and so does my client.
Deb, do we have anyone else that would like to address us?
I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, then I'll turn it over to commissioners if they have any, any questions they have. This is not to be a debate, but just a question for information before we close the public hearing. I'll start with you, Mike. Are you muted, Mike?
Yeah, Mike, you're definitely still muted.
Mike, are you muted?
He appears to be unmuted. We cannot hear him.
Cycle to somebody else while he figures it out.
Why don't we go, yeah. Mike, we can't hear you for some reason. Maybe could you try logging on differently? And then the interim will move on to the next person and then come back to you. So I'd like to, my Hal Zod.
Hi, I don't have any, any questions for the speakers at this time.
Okay, Barbara Tarbox?
No, no comments, no, no questions.
Okay, so Sutherland?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Stephen Hudecheck?
No questions.
Kevin Fittwo?
No questions.
Okay, I have one item for Bill Sweeney. Could you go over the house location with, with your open space plan?
Could Bruce put it back up?
Yeah, go over how close the houses are to the adjoining lots compared to what the original plan is.
Yeah, so that.
They've all been moved back closer?
They, they have, both the house on lot one and the house on lot two are measurably closer to Ms. LaBelle's property and Ms. Cunningham's property. Simply two, for two different reasons. One is the reconfiguration of lot one narrow and the, the required easement for the new driveway narrows the building envelope toward the front of the lot. So to get the width, to get sort of an architecturally interesting house, which is what we want to build, that it, you have to shift it farther back on the property. On lot number two, you've got a, I mean, you've got a really, really tight envelope. You're literally building immediately on your setback. So that has, and you can see the shape of the house has changed a lot too. That's going to limit some of our ability to be a little bit more creative with the house design. But it definitely shifts it right to the back setback. So, you know, it, I, I, I hear the, the neighbor's concerns about open space, but the inclusion of the open space parcel, as we've shown it, actually brings some of that development closer to at least Mr. Ms. LaBelle's property in particular. And that's just the nature of, of how it lays out. If the open space was removed, we'd have a little bit more breathing room. And maybe we can go back to the original plan, Bruce, if you have that, just so people can see the difference. You've got a little bit more breathing room. Now, remember in a subdivision, you're talking about conceptual house location. So, you know, certainly, you know, the house on lot one might actually be sited further back and we'd be entitled to do that. But at least you have the option of putting it a little closer to the street in this plan. And you can do a little bit different of a house for house, you know, for lot number two, something that has a little bit more interest, a little bit further away from the property line. Again, maybe lot two is, is only a couple of feet difference, but lot one definitely it has an impact.
Okay, thank you. I didn't have any other questions. Ken?
I am back on.
Can you talk to us now, Mike?
Yeah, no, I, I don't have any questions, I don't think, other than what I see I can, that we can't discuss later on.
All right, yeah, because we're not in the debate mode, just to gather information and make sure everybody has inputted their concerns or.
Mr. Chairman, could I rebut? Before you close the hearing, if you're looking to close the hearing, could I rebut before you do so?
Yes. No, I like to go through and make sure there are no other open issues before we close.
Um, I'm not going to respond to Mr. Carney. I've responded multiple times to him already. But Attorney Slater, who I have great respect for as a, as a colleague at, at the bar, just two items. There is a civil dispute between my client and Attorney Slater's client. Nowhere in your regulations does it allow you to put a condition on a plan regarding a civil lawsuit between two parties where the town's not involved. And so, you know, to put such a note on the plan is totally unnecessary. And quite frankly, you have no basis for doing it. So that's, that's an issue. And feel free, you can, after you close the hearing, you can talk to your town council about that. You can talk to your staff about that. It just has no place in the subdivision arena. And second,
Warren, because he likes me better.
Attorney Slater is correct that the commission has the right to be reasonable in determining the suitable size of an open space area. 10% is the number that's in your regulations that's listed. Can it be more than 10%? Yes, it can't be less than 10% without your consent. And we're not seeking that consent. We're providing 10%. But the question is, is what we've provided suitable for the need? And, you know, we listened carefully to Commissioner Sutherland and to yourself, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, and what we heard was a very passive sort of pocket park idea with some bench seating. You can do that easily with 4,100 square feet. You don't need more than that. And, and I think if, if the intent was to increase that to a point to frustrate or undermine the ability to do this subdivision, which I think, which, which Attorney Slater is suggesting, you know, I don't think that that's the intent of the regulation. And it, and I think it's simply an effort to frustrate our application and to create obstacles for it. I, I think Commissioner Zod said very well at the last meeting that that's really, you know, those kinds of, of dedications to undermine the ability to do something, not what those, that the purpose of that section of the regulations is about. And so again, I don't think, I, I don't think an open space dedication is, is, is appropriate at all in this, in this situation. I would encourage you to look at all the small subdivisions you've done around this town. For those of you who've been on the board, it, it's, it's really unheard of in my mind in this type of a location for it. This is exactly why fee in lieu of is in your regulations because you don't want these little isolated, unconnected public spaces. What you want to do is have the money to be able to do those more important purchases of really critical habitat to create those linkages. That's good planning. That's what your plan of development calls for. So I encourage you to, to accept the fee in lieu of. And again, you know, I don't have anything else for you at this time. Close the public hearing. You don't have to make a decision tonight. You can sit on it. You can talk with your staff, but you can't talk with the public and you can't talk with me or Attorney Slater. But I think, you know, we've, we beat this, this issue quite a bit over the last three hearings. And I think it's time to close the hearing and move on. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one question.
Yes.
If I could, please, I'm just, I'm wondering was Stephen Carney who spoke, and he said there were seven other people. Are we to assume that the other seven people are in agreement with Mr. Carney? Or they want to acknowledge their agreement or the things that they agree to or not? Because otherwise there's no point in even knowing that information.
I, I don't know, but if we have to understand what everybody agrees.
I don't, I don't know why we were told that there were seven other people with him.
Oh, just to make sure none of them wanted to speak to us.
Just wondering why that was.
Just to make sure that we recognize anyone in the public that would like to address us. So we keep going around and telling.
Then should, I'm, I'm just, I guess my question is, should we assume that it was just Mr. Carney speaking or that there are other people who are?
They said no one else wanted to speak at that time. I plan to go back to staff to see if they have anything to ask and make sure there's no one on the public that wants to address us and make sure no other commissioners have any questions that need to be answered before we close the hearing.
That's all. Thank you.
Because once we close it, then we cannot accept any more input before we get into the discussion phase, which is not part of the public hearing.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, does staff have any additional information to offer or comments?
This is Bruce from Opposing Planning and Development. I don't have any other comments. I'm not sure. Deb has anything to add or is anyone else? But I don't have anything else right now.
All right. Deb, is there anyone in the public that has their hands raised to provide more information?
Yes, there are a couple more folks who do want to speak to you.
All right, could we?
All right.
Get them online.
Peter Roper.
Am I unmuted now?
Bar.
Okay, thank you. Peter Roper, 210 Peakwood Avenue, Mystic. And I'm representing Barbara Nelson, who lives next door to this proposal at 73 Star Street. Thank you on the commission for doing your service. I appreciate it and I think you should be told often. So thank you for your time. Thank you for having this, this hearing. I, I appreciate the applicant's proposal for open space. I, I think it looks like it does fit in. It certainly would be a benefit to my, my friend Barbara Nelson because it's along her, her property line. It would keep a house further away from her, which would be a plus. To me, though, it does show that I think we're trying to get too much into this space. I plead with the Gallagher's to reconsider and, you know, initially we were told they love Mystic and they jumped on a chance to buy this property, but it looks like they just want to make money because they want to make the maximum from the minimum. I think two lots would be appropriate here. And in line with that, I, I hope the commission will revisit the zoning in this area because this zoning doesn't seem appropriate to the neighborhood at all. And I, I am surprised that it's zoned for such small lots. But I do appreciate the effort for the open space. It would be a nice pocket park. There are lots of people walk here. I think a bench would be popular there. I see people stop and talk with their dogs and meeting neighbors. And, you know, whether it's a huge piece of valuable natural space is not the question. It's whether it would be appropriate, and I think it would be. But I, I prefer to see two lots. And if you're going to do three lots, I hope you do require the sidewalk because that's sort of a bottom line for me that it's necessary. And I remind the commission, there is a sidewalk on the other side of Barbara Nelson's lot that comes down from Cliff Street along Cliff Lane. Thank you for your time and good luck.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Let's see, Leah Hartman.
Thank you for your time. I'll be brief. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I am thankful for the opportunity to support the open space as proposed tonight. I too am really hopeful that you will consider that in the keeping of the neighborhood, literally across Star Street, the zoning is for twice the size of these lots as currently zoned on this southern side of Star. And so I being one of those houses at 105 River subject to that zoning of a larger lot. So I support the open space. I'm hopeful that if you do consider the proposal, you'll consider two lots. But if you do approve three lots, I'm really, really hopeful that you will consider approving only two driveways coming to Star Street. It is a pedestrian active street with animals, with children and with people. And it is a safety concern, which I raised at the last hearing. So thank you again. I vote, I, I support, encourage you to vote in support of the open space and consider two lots or at a minimum two driveways to Star. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Madeline Carney.
Yes, this is Olga Labella. I'd like to address the board and I, I won't take much of your time. But I just have a few comments to say. There have been obviously many concerns and issues that have been voiced over this past month by neighbors and friends of their unhappiness with this proposed plan to subdivide 55 Star Street. I think comments were and concerns were honest. They were valid and quite heartfelt. Now, the subdivision of three lots is out of size, out of character for this neighborhood, regardless of whether it is or is not in the historic district. The surrounding historic homes and the Mystic Seaport, just a short distance away, are not just ordinary places. At the last meeting, reference was made that it seemed that I was concerned that this development would be obstructing the view that I have had from my house for a long time. I want to make it very clear that this is not about obstructing views. It's about loss of privacy, diminishing current property values and degrading the neighborhood that we have long supported, cherished and preserved. The regulations posted on the Town of Brown website says that subdivisions should not destroy the character of a neighborhood, diminish property values, invade privacy or to, or to destroy the natural topography of the land that is considered. That now I understand are goals. Well, I am in hopes that the board can successfully achieve at least one goal and not destroy the character of this wonderful neighborhood. This is compromised all the time. There should be a way in which some compromises can be made and which benefits both parties. You who are in public service have the political power, the ability and the responsibility to make decisions that are based for the people you serve. At the end of all this, you know, at the end of the day, you're all going to your respective homes and you're going to be carrying out your daily routine, your daily life. All of this will get forgotten except for those of us who are left living in an area we no longer recognize. We end up holding the aftermath of this destruction and for that I am sincerely sorry. I hope you, you just approve two building lots if you need to and let it be at that and keep the integrity of this area as is. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else, Deb?
I, I would like the opportunity to speak. This is Madeline Carney. And I have been residing with my grandfather at 51 Star Street throughout the pandemic. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm sitting here around a table of people who are really genuinely distraught and upset by this. and they feel that their homes are being destroyed. Um, I can say I've grown up in this neighborhood my entire life and it's been so nice to have this, this open green space and it is right around the corner from more of a village setting. And I think that's what makes it so special. Um, and I think to me at least, this, this past year has really just shown us that, you know, if there's nothing more important than being able to feel safe in your home and have space and have greenery and have that at outdoor areas. Community is everything. And I think that it's, you know, really irresponsible for the town to turn away from, from the people that they claim to represent and, and help, you know, implement this subdivision that has, uh, that's helping people who live all the way out in Greenwich. They're not a part of our community. This is, this is purely a for-profit enterprise. Um, and you know, real people and real homes are being hurt and destroyed. And again, if this pandemic has taught us nothing, then I would think, you know, what has this past year been for? Um, so that's all I have to say. And I don't know if there's anyone else here who would like to speak.
Is there anyone else at Madeline Carney's?
Yes.
Would like to speak?
Uh, it looks like there's one more person.
I spoke last time. This is Lynn Gannon and I was the last person residing in that house. And I just want to say that my dad bought in Grotton for thirty-five years. My mother was on the RTM for eight years. Property and they would never want to see this happen to it. They wouldn't want to see it destroyed the way you're destroying it. And Reddy Gallagher, I don't know her, but I dislike her immensely because she promised that she would not do this. I would not sign the sales and purchase agreement if she were going to make it into three lots. And she didn't give a damn what I said. We have sold this to the wrong people. And if you talk about open space, my parents had everything in the backyard from coyotes to foxes to woodchucks. There was a deer once drinking out of the pool. I mean, there is a lot of nature around here. So saying it's not a good spot for open space, you would have to live here to see it. It is a great spot and no matter what they can carve out, if it's the minimum of fifty feet, then they should do it. They should leave something of that property for, for the animals that come in the neighborhood. I just, you know, sorry, I'm just very emotional about this. But you know, it's a beautiful piece of property and they're, they're just going to cut it up and it's nothing to do with, you know, uh, anything but money. It's, it's all about money. And you can't tell me otherwise. That's, that's what it has to do with money. So if they wanted to make two lots, I could even try to adjust to that, but there should never be three lots here. The town doesn't care about any of these people here and we're all paying taxes. My parents paid taxes for fifty years on that lot and no one really cares. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? With Madeline Carney?
No, that'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public, Deb?
I do not see anyone else with their hand up.
Any of the commissioners have anything else? Question?
You got one more hand.
Yeah, I, I see it. There's one more member of the public, if, if there's no one at the commission who wants to speak.
Well, we might as well recognize the public first and.
Uh, Scott and Joyce Westerville.
Good evening. I think I may have stepped in a little quick. I thought you were closing the public comments. So if this is just about fifty-five Star Street, I'll wait until there's another. The public communications is next, right?
That's correct.
It's just part of the public hearing for fifty-five.
Okay. I, I'm sorry. I missed, I misheard it. So I'll wait my turn.
Business, uh, part of the meeting yet.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. So is there anyone else who wants to speak about fifty-five Star Street? So I don't see any other hands up, uh, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any commissioners have any more information or questions they would like to address? Does staff have anything more to, to state?
No.
Applicant have anything more? If not, uh, I'll move to close the public hearing for fifty-five Star Street subdivision. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's moved and seconded. Great discussion on closing the public hearing. If none will vote on, on the motion to close a public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. All right. The motion is carried unanimously. So the next, uh, item on the agenda is consideration of public hearings, which is fifty-five Star Street. And I'd like to go around the commission to see if they have any comments or can, you know, what they would like to see and not take the vote tonight and make sure we have adequate, uh, presentation of a motion for our next meeting to actually make a decision and continue the, or make a debate at that time. So I'll start with you, Mike. Your audio is back.
Yeah, no, I think it's working. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, I'm, I, 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 I would like to see open space out there. I think that it, uh, isn't an appropriate place to have it. Our, uh, regulations actually require us to take open space. They say we shall take open space and that we may take fee in lieu of. Four point nine one says the planning commission shall require land be reserved for parks, playgrounds and other public purposes. And, uh, section five says that we may, that we may take a fee in lieu of. And it was mentioned in a previous meeting that we don't want to penalize the developer. But I don't ever see open space as a penalty in any way. Uh, the penalty is the fee. If you can't provide open space, if it isn't acceptable, then the penalty is the fee, ten percent. Uh, eighteen years I've been on this commission. I can only recall one piece of property that we were able, than able to buy with, uh, the amount of money that we are able to get, which doesn't, uh, accumulate quite as fast as we would like. We purchased the property on, uh, Thomas Road from Mr. Spicer. Uh, I, I think that property sold for over nine hundred thousand dollars, maybe close to a million dollars. I, I don't remember all the details. Uh, we never, it would have taken us fifty years collecting ten or twenty thousand dollars at a time. I, I think that, that the, the fee in lieu of is a, is a, uh, a way to keep the whole process fair. Because, uh, if, if a piece of property and back, I, when I first started, there was no fee in lieu of. It was just, we had the discretion to take open space or not. And it was seen at that time as being unfair because some people didn't give open space and some had to. And so the fee was put in for that reason, I believe, to make it all fair. Uh, I, I, it isn't, it is a, a way to make it work, but I don't think it's, um, that there's a, a lot lost in friction, I would say. When, we, we would never be able to buy very much open space with twenty thousand dollars. Granted, over the years we will, but it's going to be many, many years. Um, I, I would like to see a, a different shape of the open space. I think I would like to see it more regular than come down to a little tiny point in the back that seems going to be a maintenance or taking care of it or anything else is going to make it difficult. I could see this park, as I would call it, to, as a compliment to the, uh, other park at the other end of the town, the John Kelly Park, which is also very small. Uh, and, and to create perhaps maybe a historic or an architectural, uh, tour through this area. There's a lot of beautiful houses. And I could, and, and what, uh, the open, the land across the street, the river views. Um, I could see easily a nice loop that would go from downtown, uh, through this area to have a park there. Someone could grab a sandwich, maybe a picnic table in that area and you could have some lunch. And, and to make a great loop in there, architectural loop or a historic loop, you've got the, uh, the, where the John Mason statue used to be. There's a lot of historic and architectural important significant things in this area. And I think this would complement it. I, I don't, I, if I read, um, Mr. Barry's letter to us, it talks about the three tiers of connectivity, which I tried to look up. And it, and I, I'm, I'm trying to think if I use this criteria to, to pick my open space, what would we ever pick? You know, I, I don't know if, if aquatic plains or Sutton Park or even that other little John Kelly Park would fit this criteria. I don't think it would. And so I, I think that, miss, though Mr. Barry's, uh, letter is useful, it identifies one use of open space or, but not all of the uses that we could potentially have. And I think that in this area, especially in the downtown, little urban park like this, I think of Newport. I think of New Bedford, which have these architectural tours. And I think that this could work for us. That's all for now. That was more than I expected, but sorry.
Any thoughts on the sidewalk?
I, I, I think that, uh, you know, if the zoning remains the way that it is and that the potential for more subdivisions in this area is real, then sidewalks are probably necessary. I wouldn't want to see the walls disturbed. Maybe we could compromise on its width. Um, but I think that the probably, you know, if you went down to four feet, maybe we could make it fit in better. I would like to see it made out of concrete. And, uh, and then we could actually have some connectivity and a, and a nice sort of, uh, way to get through this area. That's all. Thank you.
Hell, what? How do you feel about?
Yeah, let me, let me share a screen here. We've got two things here. Let's try this one. Are you seeing the screen here with my marker?
Hmm.
Yeah. So let me tell you what I'm looking at here. I'm trying to quantify what we are trying to say. Uh, so I kind of spent a few afternoons. I'm sorry, the graphics isn't better. It's just the story that grew in the telling. Now here's our property in question up here at the top. And we're kind of being asked if we're saying, okay, three lots is too many, two lots is appropriate. Well, that's what the RS twenty is. And so we're kind of saying that what's wrong is that we should be gerrymandering the zone, the twelve twenties owner around this. And I say gerrymandering it because all these other tick marks that I have, all the hash marks. Lots, those are not subdivisible as they are now. They're under twenty-four thousand square feet. All the yellow ones, those are under fourteen thousand square feet, which is the average of what our forty-two thousand square foot lot in question would divide up to. I'm looking at a thirty thousand square foot view. The orange ones aren't even acceptable for that. They're all under twelve thousand square feet. So in terms of the, the mystic that we're trying to save and the mystic that we're possibly ruining by doing this, I think we are changing what goes on when that street a bit. But we're, I don't think we're changing mystic. I think this is already what mystic looks like. I think it's already saturated, or not saturated, covered with these various smaller sized lots, lots in back of lots. Lots that have already been broken down into pieces. The lots that you see little fractions on, those aren't really fractions. They're just, if in fact those were the ones that can still be subdivided, I'd say they could be if the owners somehow lost their minds because they're so valuable as they are and the size that they are. Um, you'll notice almost all of them aren't on the waterfront. They're inboard a little bit. That if the zoning stays the way it is, there's one up here in the corner. In fact, that would for instance be, you can, now you can subdivide it to three, change the zoning, could divide it into two pieces. Right now, the one below it, you could do four pieces right now. You could divide it into two. If we were to change the zoning, if we go forward and say, hey, this is the wrong zone in this area because it makes it too dense. This last one here, it would actually take away their right to subdivide. Right now they have it. They bought that lot so that they could. Now they wouldn't be able to. So we'd be taking away the rest of these people's rights to subdivide it as they thought they could. Though over the last, what, twenty years? I don't know how long this archwell zone has been there. They've remained because they're very valuable the way they are, that's the nature of it. So I'm not quite sure what we're fighting for here. I feel really bad that these people feel really bad. Imagine if I lived next door, then I wouldn't want to see three homes where they're now, it's a very small home on a very large lot. Everyone wants that. But we didn't create this, I'm afraid. We are bound to enforce this zone. So I'm not sure we can even think about changing our mind on how many houses should be on there. I think we should have to kind of disregard that. It's legal now. It had, was there forever for a couple of decades at least. And I don't have any right to shut that down or to even reevaluate right now. It looks like it's kind of the right zone. It just has some pockets now that have these great big older lots. They're still stuck into it. Adjacent to it in every corner, and especially as you go up the hill, are much smaller lots. They're ranging, you know, well, well below twelve thousand square feet. So the lot size and how many they squeeze into it, I hate the idea and that's what it's done for. I hate the idea of the three driveways in a row. To me, that's them shooting themselves in the foot because that will remove the possibility of street parking on their side. It'll just be a bunch of driveways, but I don't think we have any right to, to stop that. I think they're permitted to do it and that's not our, I don't think we're up to doing that. I will throw out there for the open space. I'm not dead set against it. I mean, if we have the, the parks and rec, saying we don't, that they don't want it, that there is adequate park around there. Uh, I kind of agree with that myself. I'm not dead set against it, but they, having it be a narrow little triangle going deeply back in there makes no sense to me. Um, in terms of being a nice place to be, well, I would agree if this were farther up in the town someplace where for, I don't know where, but just anywhere else where it is here. If I got to this place on foot, I'm only a few hundred feet away from the riverfront. That's where I'd want to be. I wouldn't want to be stopping a few hundred feet up from the riverfront, getting a partial view through the trees and around houses. I'm, I'm right there. I'm on my way to River Road. I'm on my way around, you know, up and down growth. This is not a place I want to stop and put it, even to maintain a bench. So I, I don't know the point of this. I don't think this is one of those, if you build it, they will come. I think if you build it, it will just languish because there, there's just not much point in being where it is. The area in general, we've already talked about places that are in general, how they're served by open space. And this place actually has quite a bit of open space right now. It's up on top of the hill. It's not on the bottom of the hill where the R seven is. So it's actually pretty wide open. Uh, Cliff Street does not look like the rest of the streets in town. It looks like a, a, a street out in legend, the country someplace. Um, but it does have, as Michael mentioned, the sidewalk, it has been mentioned there, the cliff has a sidewalk for as little as it is. I don't think that's a legitimate sidewalk, but it is a place to get off the street if you're walking on a. for as little as it is. I don't think that's a legitimate sidewalk, but it is a place to get off the street if you're walking on a narrow street. So I am completely in favor of putting a sidewalk out there in front. It it would be discontinuous at the moment. I don't think we in planning, we care what's happening this year. We're planning for 20 and 30 and 40 years from now. And we need to chip away at having sidewalks. As had been mentioned, we can require that the stone wall just be relocated a bit to make way for some sidewalk too. It doesn't have to be elaborate. But we do need to allow people to get off the street. In fact, I'd say even more so because this block is a little bit long for the shorter blocks. It doesn't matter as much because you go from corner to corner. Here you need a little extra room to get out of the way. So I think this is having sidewalk there is kind of essential. Frankly, if I would think though, if we really want to put a bench someplace, then we just need enough room for a bench. Having it cut into the site and make these lots kind of excruciatingly strange is is not in anybody's best interest. And that's all I got.
Barbara?
Uh, yes, on the open space uh issue, I think I've changed my mind on that. Originally, I was for it. But actually, I agree that it really isn't of much use. I'd like to see a bench there, but we don't need all that land in the back. That would just be a waste of space. And it would probably be be used by the adjacent owners anyway, but that's beside the point. Uh, so I'm I I think I would vote against the open space and and accept the money in lieu of. Um, and one of the reasons is that the actual open space takes away from the uh the the areas where the houses can be built. And if we want them to look a little farther apart, then requiring the open space would defeat that. I think using that land for lots is a better use of of the land visually than um keeping it. And so I would rather see larger lots for the three lots that unfortunately, we may be required to allow. I'd certainly prefer two lots, no question about that. And I certainly would prefer two driveways. And I am in favor of sidewalks. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Sue?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I took the time to go back there again today and just look around and think about it. Um, and so um, I think at this point, I'm not in favor of the open space set aside. I think the fee in lieu makes a lot more sense. And while fee and lose may not seem like an important thing, I think if you look at their impact in this region, it's considerable. Uh, sometimes you get bigger fees than other times, so but it does add up. Um, the other thing too on the sidewalk, um, I guess I'm really not, uh, I don't know, I'm just not in favor of a sidewalk there. Um, to me, it's a very walkable street. Um, I think once you get to River Road, I was driving along there today and I was surprised at how unwalkable it is, little alone having a bike on it. It's just so extremely narrow and people are out in the car lanes. You know, two across as if it's a, you know, the middle of a park or something. So um, by that, that was interesting. But for the small street like Star Street, I don't see why that couldn't just be a walkable street more than having some sort of sidewalk put in there. Um, so those are my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Also, Jeff, I would just like to recognize Hal for that wonderful uh out outline that he gave us. It really puts puts things in perspective, and I thank him for that.
That was very, very.
Thank you.
Uh, just one point, um, when we really get to debate, only the members that can vote can participate in a debate. And I noticed everybody regular members were at all pub the public hearings except for Mike. I think you missed one. And I don't know if you've uh heard the tapes. If not, you'll have to.
I watched the video is all I did.
Well, same difference.
You know, the I watched the yeah, that's what I did. I did this. I watched the Zoom.
Yeah. No, that's that's even better than the tapes. Okay, so those that would be the myself and the other members, regular members would be the only ones allowed to participate in the in the debate and vote. Because if you can't, because other people are not allowed to provide any portion of the debate. We can't ask for other, you know, like legal interpretations or that type of thing. Otherwise, it's between us.
I just have a process question, Chairman.
Yes.
So I presume then what you're saying, even though we may have participated in the past, Steve or I cannot participate this evening in a debate.
Because of the public hearing.
Because of the public hearing. Okay.
Yep, that's what makes it unique.
Yes, it does.
On other types of of our meetings, I like to hear from everybody. But once there's been a was a court case a while ago that said that once a public hearing is is closed, you cannot receive see the any, the voting members cannot receive any additional information. It, you know, in legal interpretations or what the rules are, you can, but uh no other input can be provided.
No, I got it. Thank you. Thanks for the distinction.
I think there was a court case that got somebody in trouble with that. I think with a conflict of interest. Yeah, my thoughts on the open space is that if we accept it, then it puts a big burden on the town for something that will probably have very minimal use because it's out of the way from from everyday uh people walking around except for the people in the neighborhood, which should be a a burden that we don't need, and we could use the funds for a purpose for obtaining open spaces. Living more little more meaningful, and I don't think we should use the open space or the sidewalk as a penalty thing for the developer. We should do it because it would either enhance, it would enhance the development itself. And what I like to do is continue our discussion for this for our next hearing. So we can make sure that we have all the legal aspects of either of what we approve or disapprove with this with this application ironed out with the staff and if we need to, the town attorney. So I like to uh, close the discussion at this point unless any of the voting members have any additional information to to add.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the only thing that I would say is that I also I agree with you and I do not. But I I do not believe that the sidewalk or open space requirement is in any way a penalty. These are things that would both benefit the town and the developer, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, well, we should be making that at the next at our next meeting. I'd like to be able to really debate what we want to do and have an adequate motions prepared rather than trying to prepare them off the cuff tonight. And and do and have the real debate for what we want to do then.
That's reasonable. Thank you.
Because if we do it off the cuff, we could end up in trouble. We might miss something that needs to be be covered be covered. So I like to move on to a regular business meeting. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of uh the meeting of January 21st. I'll make a motion to approve the meetings minute meeting minutes of January 21st. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in seconded. Does anyone have any corrections for the for the minutes? Hearing if no one has any, then I'll move for the uh, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Actually, I thought they were very well done for a summary of a lot of comments. So the next item is public communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications to identify?
I got a letter, Mr. Chairman, from Al Alma Richards.
Mm hmm.
I'm sure everyone else got it as well.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else have anything? Does staff have any? Any items?
I think I just want to note that you also received correspondence from Big Fitzgerald regarding postal access and from Roseanne Kautowski regarding the short term agreement for the Mystic Ed Center.
Okay. Does anyone on, does anyone else on the commission have anything? If not, uh, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this?
Yes, there's a couple of folks with their hands up.
Okay, why don't you go call them?
Our Kautau.
Good evening, Roseanne Kautowski, 24 Anne Avenue, RTM District Five. Is the audio okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
I would like to thank the commission for taking charge of writing the zoning regulations for the Mystic Oral School property. Your workshop a week ago Thursday was very interesting. I appreciate the input of the commissioners as well as the fact that the commission is going to start the process from the beginning and decide what should go on the Mystic Oral School property before writing the new zoning regs. It is important that the commission creates a zoning regulations for the Mystic Oral School property and then move forward. Also, I appreciate the fact that it was noted that this project was done backwards and that staff quote, put the cart before the horse, so to speak. From what I heard at the workshop, the RFP should not have been sent out until the zoning regulations were written. During the last five years, it has been very difficult dealing with town staff regarding this project, present company excluded. One reason is that they are talking out of both sides of their mouth. On the one hand, we have town staff making public statements such as, quote, nothing has happened yet with this project. And quote, we are at the beginning of the project and the public normally isn't even involved this early in the project to quote two of their favorite statements. On the other hand, the town has signed a development agreement with the developer. The state has signed a development agreement with the developer. There is a signed lease agreement with the developer. And recently, I just found out there is a short term tax agreement with the town, the developer and the state. Both things cannot be true at the same time. Since 2016, I have brought to the attention of anyone who will listen at town council meetings, RTM meetings, planning and zoning meetings, that there has been zero transparency from the town and zero input from the neighbors regarding this project. Zero. That is the truth. When town staff makes a statement that the project has been transparent from the beginning, it is not true. They are not telling the truth, and I am mad about it. Ressler's project is a mega development in a little neighborhood. It is inappropriate, too dense, completely not in character with the neighborhood and must be drastically scaled back. Interestingly, at the RTM Finance Committee meeting last night, we learned that in both purchase and sales agreements for the Route 184 project and the Colonel Ledger School project, there is language that states, quote, development which is complementary to the existing and surrounding neighborhood, quote. Really? Why is that standard not applied to the Mystic Oral School property? It is important that elected and appointed officials as well as town staff consider and move forward on projects that are reasonable, appropriate and good for the town and the community. The Ressler mega development proposal is not good for the Mystic Oral School property, not good for the northeast section of town and not good for the town of Grotton. I will be here every step of the way, encouraging the commission to approve a project for the Mystic Oral School property that is appropriate, reasonable and like other development in town, quote, complementary to the existing and surrounding neighborhood. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, Becca Welt.
Am I unmuted now?
You are.
Okay, this is Becca Welt, 32 Boulder Court. And I just wanted to say thank you for the discussion last week about the oral school property. I appreciate that you're listening to our concerns, especially about density, and I ask that you continue to keep in mind that Mystic is a village and not a city. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see anyone else with their hand up. Look, here we go. No. Um, all right. I think Scott and Joyce Westervelt would like to speak.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
I I appreciate everyone's uh help here in in bringing this matter forward. We've talked about this a number of times, but I'm like thinking along the lines of how the process works. Um, and this is going to segue into what Roseanne had said, but should the planning zoning commission have had a voice or input into the developers agreement? Basically, would you have put vertige in the developers agreement that would have changed how this zoning uh went about happening with respect to the full review of all the proposals? Or was the review and acceptance of the proposal itself and presentation to the town council the sole responsibility of the planning department? Another, and then a second question there is, while watching the workshop last week, I understood that the workshop was for the Planning and Zoning Committee. So when I signed on to listen to it without uh being a part of it, I honestly was surprised to see that uh John Reiner and members of the of his staff were part of that. If it's a working group for the Planning and Zoning Committee, I'm curious if it was proper procedure to have them as part of that. That's one of my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, let's see, I have a phone call. Um, the last four digits are 1147. Phone phone number with the last digits 1147. You can unmute yourself if you like.
Do I know how?
Not sure. I'm not sure how to do it. I think it starts six, actually.
Okay, I believe I'm unmuted. Can you read?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I couldn't tell the number. My name is Jim Furlong. I live at 57 Fish Town Lane in Mystic. Um, as I try to understand the floating zone that's planned for the Risper project, I am puzzled by sections of two official statements that appear to encourage Mr. Risper to sharply augment his state provided 48 acres on the Mystic River Bluffs. On January 15th of this year, the Horsley Witten Group of Consultants presented new language for the proposed floating zone that will border the project. The language which is set out in the introduction of the proposed new regs would allow development of both the oral school property itself and also any adjacent properties that are deemed suitable by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Horsley Witten memo that I just cited echoes section 2.03 of the Development Agreement between Ressler and the town of Grotton. That agreement is dated February 6, 2020. Here is a sentence from uh section 2.03 of that agreement, quote, the developer shall have the right to The developer shall have the right to, at his sole discretion. Acquire additional properties, including but not limited to. Properties abutting the property, that's this main property, to include in this project. The language implies full integration into the floating zone. Uh, of that additional property which. Uh, the floating zone, of course, uh, conveys greater flexibility to the developer. I find it striking that the proposed regulations. By their placement and their very strong language. Uh, appears to promote expansion of this already very large project. Which is to be built in one of Mystic's most beautifully, most beautiful and biologically valuable areas. This, the zoning commission will have the last say on whether the expansion takes place, fortunately. But it's puzzling why this language turned up as early as February two thousand twenty. Could it point to over eagerness for an extremely large project? That now needs to be rethought. I'd like to add one technical point. If Mr. Ressler acquires and incorporates an adjacent property. Would current language allow him to acquire a third property? One that's adjacent only to the second and then incorporate the new one into the floating zone. Uh, thank you. I'll submit a copy of my remarks to the OPDS.
Thank you. Um, I do not see anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay. Then we can move on to new business. Which the first item is new applications.
Uh, we have none.
Referrals, the first one is a ZBA. Meeting, uh, tomorrow.
Yes.
For the, uh, forty five Essex Street, Wenderoth Residence. Staff have any?
No, this is, um. Back variance, um. The property owners plan to raise their, their structure above the flood zone, um, and they need a variance. Excuse me, uh, they need a variance for the front steps. I think you have the plans in your packet.
We do. Does anyone have any concerns with this or?
I drove by it yesterday and, uh, I looked at the other properties and their affrontages and, and this doesn't seem out of line.
Yeah. So we did come up with no comments, which is our normal. Way we treat these for residential properties. Does any, anyone else on the commission have any concern with this? If not, we'll just say we have no comment.
Very good.
The next one is a Stonington referral for Whalers Inn. Um, on eleven Cottrell Street, uh, and this is just the cam.
Right, that's right.
Referring for this item.
That's right, um.
Staff have any concerns with this? It doesn't really affect. The others, the west side of the river. Does anyone on the commission have any concerns with it? So we have no comments on this.
Doesn't affect us.
Hmm?
Doesn't affect us.
No.
As a cam, it doesn't affect us.
No. Report of chair, I have, uh, nothing else to add. Report of commissioned or any of the commissioners have any? Thing they wish to. Present?
Uh, I just had one, uh. Question, I guess for staff. I just wanted to make sure. Um, since Kara has, uh, moved on. Is there, uh, someone else who's been assigned to her? Responsibilities of keeping track of, uh, sidewalk agreements and those kinds of things. I've got a list hanging on my bulletin board, but it's just me. I'm wondering if, uh, someone else has taken over that, uh, responsibility.
So for right now, Deb Gillett is providing administrative staff for planning and zoning. Um, I hope we will have someone new on board, um, by mid March. So, so yes, there will be someone.
I just want to make sure that they, uh. You know, if anything happens. With sidewalk agreements or other things like that, that, uh, there's a process in place and that it's not, because we can't, I mean, I. Can't rely on me. Thank you.
Anything, any of the other commissioners have anything? Okay, reported staff.
Um, the only thing I have, um, is CIP is ready for your eight twenty four review. Um, so I am hoping to schedule a special meeting, uh, with you folks. The town manager does want to attend. He's generally available on Mondays and Thursdays, um. The other days of the week, he has meetings. Um, so we'll be sending out a, we'll send out a poll.
Okay. For Mondays and Thursdays. And when does it have to be completed?
Um, it should be done before, um, it would be great to be done before the budget goes out, um, so by the end of March.
By the end of March, so we have next month.
We do.
Okay. Cause if you put it down just to two days a week, that might be limiting. But we don't need to have everybody there either.
Oh, that's true. That's true. We'll, we'll send out a poll.
Okay. And the paperwork.
And the paper, yeah, and the paperwork. Um, I mean, we will send it to you electronically, but, um, if you let us know you want paper copies, we're happy to get that to you as well.
Okay, good, because it is a lot.
It is.
Long list. Anything else, Deb?
That's all I have.
And we have the ASP report. Which it took me a while to figure out what it was because it doesn't have a title. So. Does anyone have any concerns with any of the, uh, items on, on the report? Okay. There, no one has anything else, uh. For tonight's meeting, I'll make a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, and our next meeting is March ninth.
Unless we have a special meeting before that, yes.
Oh, don't say that.
For the CIP, for the CIP.
Oh, for the CIP. That's not very far away, March ninth, two weeks. Yeah, if you can fit it in before then, it would be good. And we don't have any special meetings for the NEC, right?
Not right now. No, we don't.
We're gonna wait until we get. Updates from, uh. The consultant.
That, that's right.
Okay, good. All right, well, good night, everyone.
All right.
Good night. Good night, everyone.